We'll call this regular workshop meeting with Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you have a copy of the proposed agenda for this workshop, and I would like to add as item one tonight, we're going to move one to two. I want to move one to two and add an item. Number one is being a grant. And I'll give you that information here in a minute. I want to let Glenn present the informational grant, if you don't mind, sir.
You want to go ahead and make the motion to approve?
Some moves.
With the approval of the change?
Approval of the agenda with the changes presented.
Motion and second. Any discussion here or not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now Glenn.
All right, good evening, council. We've just been made aware today of a grant that is due on September 1st, and it's an opportunity for money that will not have to be matched, and we knew that y'all would not want to pass up this opportunity, at least without not having heard about it. So I want to ask Anthony and Lilly to speak about this grant, as they were the ones that found and have now researched it as it was, so they can talk about it.
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, mayor and council. We are in a very unique situation today, where we have appeared to be awarded about $95,000 in grant funding that we didn't even apply for. So, that's a good situation to be in, of course, but being that it's so new, we do not have all of the details for you as to what the money is for, you know, what the scope of the project would be, that we might fund with it, et cetera. But based upon our research, it appears to be a very good opportunity for us to look at some downtown revitalization efforts. The money comes from...
NC Rural Economic Development Department of Commerce.
The Department of Commerce. And there does not appear to be any local match for the funding, and the guidance for the grant program is relatively loose. So, really what we wanted to do tonight is just to inform you of this opportunity and get your concurrence in our ability to continue to pursue it, and if we find that it's a good opportunity, maybe come back to the council and talk about what we might want to do with the funding.
But the deadline to file is September 1st, so they will not meet until after that date. So if we find that it's not something that, if it's not what we think it is now, we won't do it. But if it's something that appears as that what the preliminary research has done, that is a way to get $95,000 worth of streetscape or wayfinding or something done, then we're going to proceed on.
Yes.
And we'll make you aware of it and communicate to you as we go forward.
What were some of the examples of things that...
That we can do. Planning costs that will produce a plan, a streetscape design implementation, public infrastructure such as water, sewer, lighting, digital infrastructure, facade or building improvements, wayfinding signage, or art and cultural installations. And I did receive an email just as I was walking in from Melody Adams, the director of the program, and she pretty much said just, "We could be as flexible as we need to be." And this is just ideas, we're not limited to this. The only thing we cannot do is pay for operating, staff salaries, entertainment, and food. But she pretty much said, "We have free rein to pretty much put together a project for downtown." And it's a very simple, two-page proposal that we would submit by September 1st, which describes the project, the budget for the project, and what we hope to accomplish, along with a picture of the project site. And then we would have to sign contracts, which would come October 1st, and then complete the project by March 31st of 2017. And interestingly enough, once the contracts are signed, they are going to cut us a check for $94,000 to go ahead and fund the project, and we just report out after the fact that we've accomplished it.
Let me make sure I got this correct here. Now, you don't have to specifically say what your project is going to be.
And we need time to develop that. That's what we're asking tonight, if y'all give us approval to go ahead and work toward this and keep you informed.
It's our plan as staff to get together on Monday morning, and once Dr. Woodruff gets back and come up with, and it can be also more than one project. It doesn't have to be one, it could be multiple. So there's opportunities to do a lot of great things in downtown. We just need to get it agreed upon, and get a budget for it, and get this turned in, and start getting the RFPs out and hiring people. And it's a very fast track. Like I said, we just got this today, and so...
You're wanting council direction. Sure, you had a question?
I understand the problem, but I would, rather than staff picking out the project of the options listed, I'd ask that they give council some alternatives. We could do this, we could do that, and send that out as an email and a report, then let us make that decision, either by email or whatever, to file the application.
Totally agree.
Yes, absolutely.
And mayor, of the projects that Lilly referenced here, I believe you're aware that we've been working on a lot of that type of stuff already. So, I don't believe that we're going to be pulling something out of the air and just presenting to you as a new idea, new concept that hasn't been vetted. I think what we will probably do are pull together things that we've already been working on, that just aren't currently funded, and try to move those forward with the funding that's available with this program.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
That is what I was looking for. Okay. They're looking for some direction. Anybody want to...
I'll make a motion to authorize them to move forward the planning, and come back with council with options.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, not all in favor. Say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, council. We'll report to keep you informed on that. Well, next, we come into a conversation about FEMA maps, and most people would roll their eyes and get sleepy at this point, but many of you know what the impact is of the FEMA maps and the flood control maps and things such as that. So I'm going to change places here and let Ryan introduce our speaker this evening and our consultant, and then we'll be back up with the recommendation that Richard has put forward to you.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you all will recall, back in March of this year, you authorized us to move forward with seeking out Mr. Fran Way and his company, Applied Technology and Management, which is an international company. Fran is based out of the Charleston, South Carolina office, to look at, basically analyze the initial four terabytes worth of data that's been provided by North Carolina Department of Public Safety, the flood mapping office up in Raleigh. And Fran and his colleagues there at ATM have done so, and he's going to basically give council a presentation tonight that identifies a lot of the things that were contained in that report, the 52-page report that you received last week with your agenda packet. And I'll turn this over now to Mr. Fran Way, he's a professional engineer, and walk you through that, and we'll be looking forward to any questions that you may have, we'll try to clear it up. It's not an easy subject matter, it's kind of hard to get your, you know, get your head wrapped around. So, Fran Way with ATM.
Hi. As Ryan said, we're a coastal engineering firm, we work, specialize in the southeast. We successfully helped the town of Wrightsville Beach with their FEMA map appeal about a year ago. We're working on another FEMA map appeal for aquarium structure in St. Augustine, Florida, right now. And then we do a lot of other FEMA letters and map revision, FEMA modeling, FEMA support. So that's kind of where we are. And we do a lot of computer modeling. Just to kind of, on the big picture, FEMA mapping, they remap every about 10 to 15 years. The existing Onslow County maps are from 2005, and so we're kind of right in between that 10 to 15-year schedule. The major areas right here, this is the overall schematic. The VE zone, we don't have to worry about that. The difference between the V-zone and the A-zone is a three-foot wave height, significant wave height. There's no V-zone areas in the city, therefore we don't really have to worry about that, and we won't. But you see down here, here's the base flood elevation, and that's what we're talking about a lot. And the coastal AE zone is, you know, really what we're going to focus on here. There is no limo, that's a coastal thing, we're not going to talk about that. And then obviously the X-zone, and this is, if you're going, and you see that 100-year storm, if you're in the X-zone, you're dry. Your land is dry, and your structure is dry. The A-zone is where you're going to have, you're going to have some wave effects, and you're going to have surge, and all that combines to the base flood elevation. And then the SAF, there's going to be lots of acronyms, I apologize in advance, the Special Flood Hazard Area. And this area is kind of, you know, this is where, anywhere over here is where you need flood insurance. We'll go to the next one. The existing maps for the city, basically, you can see all the AEs on this plot. There's the AEs over here, AE 2, AE 3. The AE says we're in the coastal AE zone, whether there are some small waves, under 100-year conditions, and the 3 indicates a base flood elevation of 3. And from here on out, whenever we're talking elevations, vertical elevations, they're all relative to NAVD-88, which is North American Vertical Data and 88. It's basically mean sea level. You can, everyone just think of it as mean sea level. But, so this three feet means there's a three-foot BFE there. You can see upriver, there are some sixes and sevens, and some of these smaller creeks, where you can see, you know, some 14s, 15s. So basically, there's, you know, the city of Jacksonville gets affected by coastal storm surge that comes from, you know, obviously from the coast. And then there's all, see, these smaller rivers and creeks that have their own watersheds, that have their own 100-year storm conditions. And then obviously Jacksonville is right there where they're feeling both those effects. The draft preliminary maps are, they have been out this year. In Onslow County in general, and actually the entire coastal counties of North Carolina, in general, you see along the open coast, along the barrier islands, you see a decrease in the BFEs. The storm surge is going down, the 100-year storm surge. Unfortunately, in all the kind of estuary systems in here, and actually Sneets Ferry looks pretty bad, but they've got the largest, they've got about a 10-foot increase in some areas. But the estuaries are where you're seeing significant increases. There's fours, fives, sixes, so that base flood elevation is going from a four to a 10. And even Sneets Ferry, it's going up 10 feet itself. So in general, there are a lot of happy homeowners along the coast, but we're finding a lot of the estuarine shorelines and anyone near these estuaries, you know, they're seeing some detrimental effects.
So basically, on the mainland side of the intercoastal waterway and up the rivers and creeks.
So, yeah, and then Ryan's been coordinating with NC FMP, the flood mapping partners, it's a few agencies within North Carolina, and they are tasked with remapping and doing all the technical studies, and then they, you know, coordinate with FEMA with their results and everything. For the city preliminary overview, the reds here are increases in the special flood hazard area changes, and then the blues are decreases. And as you can see, it's mostly red. It's, there's a significant increase in the flood zone areas, the 100-year flood zones. And there's some small areas where there are some decreases, but in general, it's a significant increase. These are the preliminary maps. And if you recall before, this area down here was AE 2, AE 3, and now it's an AE 10. So that's, the surge is going up about seven feet. The base flood elevation goes from about a three to a 10. And it's basically 10 in most of these areas, and then as I talked about before, some of the smaller creeks, which aren't shown here, they're even higher as well.
Just to act them at council, you see the bypass here on the bottom, and then basically this is downtown, just to orient you.
And here's a comparison, side-by-side comparison of existing versus preliminary. The red means you're in an AE zone, and the yellow, and within, it's on the aerial, the colors can get a little messed up, but the yellow is the 500-year flood zone, which is kind of a, it's called a shaded X-zone. That's really not part of the special flood hazard area, so we're not really going to talk about that 500. They map it, but they don't use it, the 500-year. So we're just really concerned about the red. And you can see here, this entire area, Court Street, Wardola, this entire area is an AE 10 now, when it was basically an X-zone, well, existing-wise, it's an X-zone, and with, you know, some spots right along the shoreline that were, you know, that were the AE zones.
Can you, just for our viewers, could you explain what the AE 10 means?
So AE means there, in terms of, you're going to have storm surge, and then you'll have wave heights less than three feet, that all contribute to that base flood elevation of 10. So, the AE, there's the VE, which is the V-zones, and those are the ones you usually see along the coast, and those have wave heights, 100-year wave heights greater than three feet, and some element of storm surge.
Would it be fair to say that AE 10 then means that you'd expect a, worst case, a 10-foot high above your sea level?
Yes.
So anybody, you know, if you're not, these folks are anywhere from 10 to 1 or 2, whatever, but 10-foot...
Let me give council an example. The base flood elevation for the marina that council purchased right on the water is currently an AE 4. And that's about, based on survey data that we had prepared for the city, the floor there is at about four feet. So the new flood maps are saying that that's going to have six feet of water inside the building. As it relates to houses, let's go to a house on Court Street. If Court Street, let's say you have a house on Court Street, the front yard is at an elevation 4. And let's say you have a two-foot-high foundation, so your finished floor is at a 6. If they, with this maps, it's going to go to a 10, that means they're a minus 4. And that means that if they have a federal insured mortgage, that insurance, the mortgage, the bank, the lending institution is going to make you carry flood insurance. And if you're a negative, a negative 4, and you'll see later in the slideshow, that may mean, on a $200,000 house, that you have to have about a $13,000 annual flood insurance premium. So we're talking money, what these folks are going to have to pay for flood insurance, compared to a $400 policy when you're three foot above. So it may not be in a flood zone today, so you don't have to have flood insurance. Now, they're going to require it if you have a mortgage, and if you are negative, those premiums are going to be substantially higher.
And I'll just, I'll note, all the mapping was done based on 2006 LiDAR data. LiDAR data is light and data ranging. It's been much better than what they used for the 2005 maps, which were from 1990s topography data. And basically, they just found that 10-foot contour line and kind of delineated it based on that LiDAR data. And so this area, you know, based on LiDAR data, this area down here is anywhere, you know, between 10 feet and 4 feet elevation. So they're under varying levels of water. They're saying that you're going to have 10 feet of water, some people will be under 6 feet of water, some under 5. There are actually a couple of little high spots here where you're going to, some areas are going to be dry in this area. But so that, and basically, just based on that 2006 LiDAR data, they find the 10-foot contour, and say anything under 10 feet is getting wet.
So will that be an automatic change, soon as they adopt these?
If, let's say that we just move forward and we go through the adoption process, and they become effective, yes, sir, that's the new rules that will go by, which means on Court Street...
So what happens when someone can't afford the $15,000 insurance increase?
They're going to have to walk away from their house.
Unfortunately, you may have people that walk away from their homes.
And you don't think that'll be a huge impact in that whole area?
Oh, absolutely. That's why, that's why we're here, and we've been rather adamant about, we need to have these things looked at, because one of the, and I'm going to steal some of Fran's thunder here, but one of the storms that the folks used for their validation model runs was Hurricane Fran. And they basically said that brought in an eight-foot wall of water. And based on conversations that have been had, experiences here, it didn't come up eight feet, but that's what they used as one of their validation runs. And then they ran 675 synthetic storm tracks with that, what I'm going to say, questionable input. So if it's questionable input, we said the output should also be questionable. And that's the reason why we've sought ATM to look at the data provided and see what may be possible for council to look at. And one of the things that we looked at, with the assistance of Park and Associates and John Pierce's office, they have actual survey points on the ground throughout Jacksonville. And Fran looked at the actual surveyed elevation points versus the LiDAR data, and what we found is there's a half a foot difference. So right off the bat, we found a half a foot difference between the data that they're using and actual surveyed elevation points that the surveyor so graciously gave to us. And he'll get into that in a little bit, here in a little while, but, you know, that's kind of one piece where we say, hey, well, if it's off a half a foot, you know, that could be a half a foot. Instead of a 10, you're talking nine and a half. You know, what else, you know, could there be? And we'll talk about that as we kind of move forward.
And here's another image of existing versus preliminary. And so we talked about, there's, you know, two elements here. There's, this flood hazard area is getting larger, and it's also getting higher. And so that's basically, and this is another image of just where the new maps are. So there are some homes along the shore that are in an AE 3 or 4 zone now, and then we have some other, many, many new homes that will be newly mapped into zones, and that will be significantly, you know, pretty high BFEs.
One of the things that we've seen presented was that for Jacksonville, we've got 800 new structures being brought into the special flood hazard area. That's true. But those 500 others are also impacted, because if they were already at a base flood elevation, let's say they were at plus 3, and you've just added 7 feet, they're minus 4, if I did that math correct, not my forte. So they're going to be impacted as well. So it's 1,366 structures in Jacksonville that are going to be impacted potentially by these maps. And that doesn't include the undeveloped properties that, let's say that we've got a subdivision or an area that could be developed for a subdivision, well, let's use Laguna Bay across the river, some of those lots are still available to be built. It's going to impact how those houses could be constructed. I dealt with the family Lot 1 Laguna Bay, I'm drawing a blank on their last name, but basically, they were going to have a living quarters on the bottom floor, and when they heard about the new maps, they talked with us, and we looked at the information, and basically what it boils down to is, they're not going to be able to have a living space on that bottom floor, you know, they're going to have to go up another floor potentially. And those are some impacts to them as well, because that obviously may not be exactly what they wanted to do. That may cost them more money to not have a living space on the first floor. So, you know, those impacts are there as well, even though they're not part of that 1,366 number. So just wanted council to be aware that it's more than just that number there.
Okay, we'll get into, just really quick, the FEMA modeling components, more acronyms for you. ADCIR, this is the, it's Advanced Circulation Model, ADCIR. It's the coastal and estuary flooding map, I mean, model, it's for the entire coast of North Carolina. The HECRA, this is the Hydraulic Engineering Center of River Analysis System. This is for rivers and creeks. It's a completely separate component, and it's a much simpler model than the ADCIR. The ADCIR is very in-depth and difficult, well, it just, it takes a lot of power. Out of those four terabytes of data that we had to review based on the modeling in this area, most of the terabytes of data were related to ADCIR. SWAN, that's Shallow Waves Near Shore, and that's a wave model, and that's for the coastal and estuarine area. And that's not just for wave heights, but there's also like a wave setup, which is another component that can increase BFEs. And then there's the WAFIS, that's the Wave Hazard Analysis Flood Insurance Study, something like that. It's the, that's the V-zone, A-zone model that's used along the coast. And again, it's not relevant for Jacksonville, because we have no, there are no V-zones in this area. So we're not going to get, we're really going to concentrate on these two models, because these are the models that are responsible for the majority of the BFEs in this area. This is the ADCIR model. You can see, you know, it's the entire coast, Jacksonville is right there, and kind of in the center of the coast, but it's kind of near the boundary, the boundary of the inland boundary of the model is about the 40 to 50-foot contour. This is an image of the surge, where you can see along the coast, there's about a 10-foot surge. It gets up to 11 right inside here. As it travels up the estuary, it goes down a little bit, there's an eight-foot, and then there's a nine, and then it's back up to 10.
And that's where Jacksonville is, right there?
Yes, and then Jacksonville's up in this area. That's the downtown Jacksonville area. Here's, for the ADCIR, they use six validation storms. Four of them were hurricane slash tropical storms, and two were nor'easters. And the one of particular note is Hurricane Fran in 1996, and that was the one that really, you know, had a significant effect for the Jacksonville area. It was probably about a 75-year storm. It wasn't quite the 100-year, but about 75. And then this is the, after they validated the model, and were confident in the modeling results, they went and ran 675 artificial storms, and you can see, obviously, this is North Carolina underneath all these storms. So they ran 675 storms of varying strength to develop the 100-year and 500-year storm And here's Hurricane Fran. We have some animations, I think, in order, just to make, in interest of time, we won't show any animations, but Ryan has some animations of kind of the area, and this area getting flooded. But you can see, this is a downtown region again, and it's getting, there's about flood elevation of about eight feet in this area. So this whole area was during Fran, and this is, we were talking with Ryan and other people about the extent of the flooding during Hurricane Fran here, 20 years ago. And it really, the flooding that the model shows seems to significantly overpredict the flooding that actually occurred by anywhere between four, you know, three or four feet. Here's a zoom-in of that area. And so everything, Wardola Drive, Court Street, Court Street Park, this is all underwater, under eight feet of water. And so, we complained, and Ryan and myself, we have been interacting with the NC FMP staff, and we'll get in a little bit more, actually, into some of these NFIP claims, but, a little later. But basically, we think the Hurricane Fran model run is significantly overpredicting the flooding elevations in the area. Insurance implications. Here again is, this is the LiDAR data, 2006 LiDAR that they used. The bluer colors are lower elevations, the redder colors are good, high elevations. And then this is that 10-foot contour line, and right along here, and this is where that AE 10 zone is. So basically, they just follow that. There are a lot of structures, and Ryan did the counts, but there are a lot of structures in this AE zone, and these structures, I mean, I have a house in an AE zone, but it's, I think it's plus 1 in insurance industry parlance. It's not that bad, insurance, AE zone flood insurance isn't that bad. It's about a tenth of what VE zone insurance is. But when you get into those negative elevations, where you're having these homes that are non-conforming to the base flood elevation, the insurance premium skyrocket.
This is high risk. It's a high risk.
And so, actually, you see a few little islands of where, that are above 10 feet, but somehow they got mapped, and that's usually due with mapping resolution, where the, you know, FEMA and their partners are mapping just huge areas, and they don't want to get every little area, they just kind of broad strokes.
That's basically the Sturgeon City Hill and the Sturgeon City area, and the Lord's Hill Cemetery.
Yeah. So, and here, this is, I talked with Spencer Rogers, Spencer, excuse me, Spencer Rogers with NCC Grant, and he has, he does a lot of work with post-hurricane damage and insurance premiums and that sort of thing. And he developed this figure. The V-zone, we don't really have to worry about here, but the AE zone, we do have to worry about. And you can see, here's that, the zero. As you can see, here's that, the, the zero. So, basically, if you're in the positive, or if you're in an AE zone and you're constructing and you get above that BFE, the AE zone insurance premiums are usually, you know, between $500 and $1,000. And they're not outrageous, but you, you can usually live with them. But as soon as you get into the negatives, you can see that the, you know, they're, you're above $10,000 pretty quickly. You know, right around the negative four, you're at 10,000. Negative four, negative five, you can, it, it gets very expensive. Now, FEMA does have a couple mechanisms to deal with that. And now, just to step back, I'm not an insurance agent, but I, we do a lot of this insurance-related, kind of dealing with FEMA and everything. Different insurance agents can interpret these rules differently. And we've encountered a lot of insurance agents where they have widely varying knowledge on, on flood zones and, and policies and grandfathering and preferred risk policies. But the preferred risk policies, these are policies that they say, okay, you're newly mapped into an AE zone, we're going to give you a break on this, on your policy because, you know. But these policies can increase 18% a year until they're the actual rate that you should be. So, they will give you a break there at the beginning, but if you're negative five, every year, you can count on an 18% increase in that premium until it reaches that actual premium cost. Now, there's grandfathering. Now, if you're in an AE three zone right now, along the, along the estuary, you can get grandfathered and keep that AE three policy and pay that AE three rate. And then, if you sell your house, you can also transfer that policy. That's a transferable policy. So, if you are in AE three or AE four, you, and there are some caveats to that. If you have multiple flood claim losses, there's some other ones where they'll, they'll revoke your grandfathering. But in general, you're, you're not bad. I have also seen some areas where if you can buy, if you're in an X-zone now, they usually steer you towards the preferred risk policies. But I have read some FEMA material that says if you're in an X-zone, you can, right now, go buy X-zone flood insurance. And that can also be grandfathered. So, that is another, if, we would, you know, highly recommend that or even look into that even more. Because obviously, if you can get grandfathered as an X-zone and kind of avoid this.
All the premiums based on $250,000 value?
Yes, for this chart, this particular chart.
So, you're saying somebody that's sitting in downtown in an X-zone now
Yes.
Could see this map, run out, buy a policy and be locked in?
Yes, that, from what I've read, yes. And again, you, you might go to five different insurance agents and they might, you might get five different stories. But from what I've read, I, I, I believe that is what, what the case is. Structures affected. We just did a little analysis in GIS based on the structures in the city with the new zones and the old zones. The existing AE zone, they're about, approximately, and this is based on NCFMD, uh, FMP structure data. And the city's data is actually more accurate, but, so Ryan could probably get a, maybe a, a better number, a little more accurate number. This is approximations. There's 323 structures in the AE zone right now. For the preliminary, there'll be 987. And I think, Ryan, you just, you said 1,366 in your calcs earlier?
Yeah, the, um, the state reported 500, that Jacksonville had 500. And this is from the chart that they shared in New Bern back in December and also recently, 509 current structures and proposed would be 1,366. So, that's what, 800 and, and 40-some, 50-some houses being added.
So, back to here, so there's, you know, a significant amount of structures are being affected by the new maps. And here's just a preliminary versus existing for the downtown area. The, the red triangles are kind of the new structures that are, will be newly mapped into an AE zone. And then, while the, the green triangles are the existing homes that will go from an AE three or four to an AE 10. Okay, now, we're out of the ADSEC area. And these are, that, there are some other areas in the city that also saw some pretty significant increases that are likely that, that, you know, don't look, kind of don't, they don't pass the walking around test. This is the Carolina Forest and this is the HECRAAS model, and this is a small riverine model. And you can see, these are elevations right here. So, we're talking about, you know, 28, 30 feet, 25 feet. So, these are all well away from any kind of coastal storm surge, which was about 10 feet. This is all river-related, related to the watersheds and everything that. And you can see, there are some structures all up in here in, in Carolina Forest that, you know, a spot where that seems, you know, should be dry. It's nowhere near the estuary. It's, it's a very small, it's a relatively small creek. But you can see there are homes all along here that, that are going to be, you know, into an AE zone now. And another example is at Belle Fork. And you can see, there's some structures where, along here.
That's my house.
That, uh, that, that will be affected. And you can see that the elevation's here about 33 feet or so. These are well away from kind of the estuary, the storm surge flooding. This is all related to riverine and watershed flooding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, here's another one. And this is really weird too, just the way they, the FEMA kind of just cut it off right here. It just looks really strange. And actually, Ryan brought this up with them and we'll talk a little bit later about kind of ways to appeal the maps. But, uh, just, just that, that looks really strange where they just kind of stopped the study. And, but you can see all these structures here, up in here, and just what we saw, all those red triangles that are, that are newly mapped into, into the AE zone. And so, there's a lot of structures along this area.
So, that's the Belle Fork Combs area, just to orient everybody.
Okay, potential appeal items. As, as we talked about, the improved topographic data. That's kind of an easier one. LiDAR data is much better than what they had 10 or 20 years ago, but it's still not as good as survey data. Survey data is more accurate. And in general, doing our analysis, there was some scatter around that half a foot increase. But we've also found that the same thing for when we worked with Wrightsville is that the survey data is just superior. And a lot of times, the LiDAR data, they get a little conservative with their processing of it to make sure it's a little lower than it, than it should be. The other potential appeal is the ADSEC model, where we could rerun that, we'd have to calibrate and rerun that. And then, the third is rerunning individual creek HECRAAS models. And that would be on a creek-by-creek basis.
And, and the folks at the state have told us that they're not going to rerun the model regardless of, you know, if we said, hey, we found this, they've said they're not going to rerun it. They're going to look to the municipality to hire a firm to rerun the model, which, you know, is, is time and costly, is time extensive and costly.
So, and this was the analysis that Ryan was talking, the Onslow County Justice Complex, there was a significant amount of survey data. And we took that and we compared it directly with the LiDAR data and we found that half a foot difference in aver, on average. For ADSEC, we'd have to kind of snip out a grid that included kind of the new river inlet and that estuary system and basically validate that model. And we're assuming, basically, there's bottom friction along that, the entire estuary. Are they letting too much water in? It looks like the tide signal might be a little higher than it should be. So, it almost like, looks like they might be putting too much water into the estuary at the inlet. And even the boundary effect of the river where the bound, the river, the, the model boundary is kind of just a, you know, about five miles upriver of Jacksonville, where there could be some, some additional piling up of water around Jacksonville. There, there are different ways to do it. But, and we could also, the, the bathymetry and the topography, we've already covered the topography, but bathymetry, the charts they used and things are, you know, it can be relatively old and they probably, a lot of times for the ADSEC, they're concentrating on, along the coast. And you can even see that with this validation. Besides kind of the buoys and things where they're validating along the coast, they had HWN, HWMs, which are high water marks. And you can see up here, there's, there are no high water marks up here near Jacksonville. So, they really didn't, and even, even along, kind of, they really concentrated along the coast and the barrier islands and just inside the barrier islands. And there's really no validation model back here. So, they kind of ran it and they looked at all the validation they had along the coast and the model does pretty well along the coast, even though, you know, it's, it's, it's better in some spots, worse in others. But, you know, that's, that's, you know, the Jacksonville area didn't get much attention during this validation. And obviously, all those 675 model ones are based on the validation.
Didn't you state in some conversations that you and I had that there was, this was off in Wilmington or was that another?
Yes, no, it was off in Wilmington. It did a pretty good job in, up, up here in the Moorhead area, but yeah, it was, it was also off by a couple feet in, in Wilmington and up the Cape Fear River. And here's another example of during Hurricane Fran at the, the USO building along Riverview. This one image, like, this is an image from, about, it's not, yes, right, you can, it's nice out, nice blue skies. But that kind of follows the four-foot contour, okay? And so, it looks like maybe the high watermark. And according to their model, that this whole building should, would have been underwater, would have been, you know, this is the flood, except here was up there. And it's the same thing, so we, we brought this up with NF, the NF, uh, NCFMP. And they pulled National Flood Insurance Claims from Hurricane Fran. And so, all these red triangles now are, are flood insurance claims following Fran. And so, they said, well, look, we've got a 15.7 and a 10.8, you know, there was a lot of water during Fran in this area. But as you can see, it was really, it was mostly right along the, the shoreline. And then, there were a few little areas up this creek, but 33 out of the 35 points that they pulled those claims, they were about five feet or less. So, that kind of says that, okay, maybe the, you know, it wasn't eight feet, it was five feet with the, the, and then, there are these, there was a couple outliers, but when talking with Ryan, these, they're, they might have had basements.
Both, both of those did have basements.
Okay, they have basements. So, you know, that great elevation of 15.7, 10.8, doesn't matter if they have a basement. So, it really looks like, according to our, the, the claims that when we look at them, it looks like about a five-foot surge when, when the model's saying there's an eight. And see, this is again where the Hurricane Fran, this is the model output from ADSEC saying that this entire area got wet. And you can see those NFIP claims are sporadically in that area, but, you know, I think, we believe there would have been a lot more claims if, you know, if the model had really, is accurately showing the Hurricane Fran results. So, summary.
Let me ask a question on that. So, even if they didn't have flood insurance, they would still track that there was a claim here for flooding? Is that how that works?
Do what, FEMA?
Like, you're talking about like these homes up here?
Right.
They were very private with those NFIP claims. They wouldn't let us see them, as you recall. Yeah, that is an interesting idea. Yeah, I'm not sure because obviously, yeah, those homes are not in the flood zone. And, you know, they always say that 20% of the flood insurance claims are outside of flood zones. So, I'm not sure how that, how that works.
I guess we need to kind of confirm whether, you would think that all of these houses would have had flood insurance claims if, if there was that much water. And from everybody that I've spoken to and in my own recollection, the water was not that high. I mean, it's.
It wasn't that.
Right.
And, and I believe these, some of these claims, especially those interior claims are FEMA claims, but these people did not have private flood insurance. But when it's declared a major disaster, then FEMA comes in, sets up their office and you deal, that's where they're getting some of their points on the map, I would believe, not from people having private flood insurance up at that end of Court Street, et cetera.
Ryan, Mr. King, is there any recourse for homeowners that is, if, if they do not wish to purchase flood insurance, is there a recourse that they can take to determine whether or not if their house is actually in a flood plain zone, you know, such as hiring, if they had the funds to do it, to hire a surveyor to come in and to survey their land to determine the elevation and based upon those findings, determine whether or not if they need to purchase flood insurance?
Basically, the folks along Court Street, they will be notified if they have that federally insured mortgage that you are now going to be in a flood zone, you have to obtain insurance.
But that's only if that person has a mortgage. What if that person's house is outright paid for and they don't have a mortgage?
They don't have to get insurance then, that's their personal preference, as I understand it. So, if that person is notified, the first thing that they will need to do is they would need to basically seek out a surveyor to perform what's called an elevation certificate. And what that's going to do is that's going to establish their finished floor elevation of their house and where the ground is. And that's going to let them know are they above the base flood or below. And based on that, they would turn that in to their mortgage company if they're above and the mortgage company should basically say, okay, the house is out of the flood zone, you don't have to have flood insurance. But if it's below.
How much it costs?
Well, I.
Approximately, survey.
Well, so, so don't put them on, I've, I've been told that an elevation certificate will range between $300 and $400 and $800 or $900.
So, that's still a financial, economic burden to the homeowners?
Right. So, once this is done, let's say that, you know, five or six or 700 people, that's, they're going to be, their first step is to seek an elevation certificate to see where their house really sits as relates to the base flood elevation zones. And then, from that, they're going to say, okay, well, my house is now a negative two. From that, they will then seek flood insurance based on that minus two and that may cost them $5,000 a year.
There, there is another form, it's called the Letter of Map, Flood Map Determination Form. Have you, have you? It's, it's, it's a little bit simpler, but if you are in an AE 10 zone, I think you, you will be required. But sometimes, you're right along the edge or you're in, along a creek or something. Sometimes, you can just get a, a simpler one, which is usually, sometimes a town or.
Well, let me give you an example. In fact, he, he called me this afternoon, I returned his call, didn't get up with him. But a gentleman that lives on Jasmine Lane called me about three or four weeks ago. He was trying to refi, Aragona Village off of Wado, NRETJ. He was trying to refinance his home. And the mortgage, the lender basically seeks a firm to let them know, is it or isn't it in a flood zone? Well, part of the lot that backs up to the creek is in an AE zone. So, they basically told the individual, we're not going to give you a refi, you need to basically go get flood insurance and an elevation certificate. Now, that example that, that Fran just gave you, which I steered him in that direction, he should be able to go to that lender and say, but where my home sits, it's actually outside of that special flood hazard area. And the plot plan, site plan that was prepared by the surveyor when the home was constructed shows that the house was proposed to be built outside of the flood zone. So, I talked with the surveying company that performed that plot plan and said, hey, look, if this homeowner wants to come have an as-built survey, kind of a foundation survey done, you know, can they do that in about what would that cost? And once again, you know, $200 to $500 so that they could then turn that into that lender and say, hey, my house is not within that special flood hazard area. Nonetheless, you have some folks that are saying you have to have something when in reality, you may not have to. And then, that's just time and effort and expense that these homeowners have to go through to try to prove, hey, look, my house, the structure's not in the flood zone. in the flood zone.
But they may still have a situation where the mortgage company says, no, we're not going to, doesn't matter, we're-
That's the issue.
I've heard, I've heard that's the case too, that if any part of your lot is in, you know, you'll have the mortgage company saying you have to have flood insurance. Now, I don't know if there's any recourse there where FEMA gets involved, because I've kind of heard that FEMA would get involved and say, no, you, it's not mandatory.
Get this out, always do a lot of, this is another step, and have it removed completely. The other fault that you have is that you can have completely out, some of these companies, they already, they charge $20, and as close they're going to say is in, then you got to argue with the determination agency, and document to them and get them swayed, that's another problem to be faced. And they just, what they do, they sit in someone California or Texas, and most of them are done, and they say, as close they're going to call it in, and then you got to prove to them it's not even, so it's not fair trade.
Based on your presentation, you've raised several questions about the accuracy of the new limits compared to 2005. On the appeal, what's your best guess in terms of how successful you'll be in an overall picture? Or is that stretching it too far?
Well, I think there are different components to it, there's the AdCirc-
Let's say the Court Street here, which is the downtown, which seems to be the hardest hit. You said that FEMA, your Fran, Fran's height differs from what they're projecting, about a couple feet, I think you said?
Yeah, about, maybe about three feet.
About three feet, which is significant.
Yes. We would have to, basically, okay, I'll, I'll get into that. For the summary, basically FEMA, I guess, has money set aside for gauge installation. It would probably be good, and it wouldn't help on this round of maps, but the next round of maps, gauge data somewhere around here, water level, gauge data would help out tremendously in the future, and FEMA supposedly has money set aside for gauge installation, and then even talking with NCC grant, they also can find some grants for that as well. Improved topography, the Belle Fork homes, they're now, there's 2015 LiDAR out that shows that Belle Fork area should not be in a special flood hazard area. So they, NC FMP staff have already said, you can file an appeal and cite the 2015 LiDAR data, you don't even need survey data, and you can say this area is incorrectly mapped, here's the 2015 LiDAR data. So, and then besides that, you have a Loma Letter of Map Amendment, and Loma, Lomar Letter of Map Revision based on fill, that's the F, and then we'll get into AdCirc modeling and Heqras modeling. Loma potential, that, this, this is that 10-foot contour line, these are in, this is in the AE 10 zone, but there's some islands of 10-foot or higher elevations. You can go to a surveyor and get a Letter of Map Amendment, that's individually, and working with a surveyor. And then the Letter of Map Revision, if you ever, say you were, oh, your house was maybe right here, or you, or maybe a couple feet below that, you could possibly do, you can do, a Letter of Map Revision based on fill, where it's a little longer process, because you have to kind of turn in stuff saying, I'm going to put in one or two feet of fill here to get out of the flood zone, but you have to prove that you're not adversely affecting your neighbors. And then, besides that, the AdCirc model, we basically snip out a portion of the grid, and then we'd have to validate the model. And the validation data, if anyone has, knows of any good validation data during Hurricane Fran, that would be great, but otherwise, we could put in a few gauges temporarily for about a month, near the inlet, maybe somewhere in the mid estuary, up near Jacksonville, and, and then we could, we'd have real data to calibrate the model, and then we could run Hurricane Fran, then we could actually run those 675 storms. Then we'd have to post-process the data and find the 100-year and the 500-year, and kind of remap the area, the study area. And we'd coordinate with FEMA and, and, you know, NC FMP, you know, the entire way. You know, I think we can bring that, those values down, the surge levels down, at least, you know, a foot or two, could, could it be three or four feet, possibly. FEMA, you know, as long as we kind of stick to their protocol and use their models and their process, they're usually flexible in that. But, you know, even talking with, with the FEMA staff, they're like, if you fix the bathymetry, that could potentially make the surge worse in this area. So obviously, there's, there's some, and obviously, we don't want that. So there, there are some areas that we have to be very careful with when we're remodeling, before remodeling this, and this is a, you know, pretty significant effort, you know, 675 models, you know, running that. This is, this whole thing was done by RNC, which is a Renaissance Computing Institute, and it's based, it's Duke, UNC, and NC State, and they've got a supercomputer that they run this on. And obviously, I think we could coordinate with them, we're, we know a few of those professors who work there, but, you know, we're tasked with rerunning their models. The Heqras modeling is a little simpler, because those little creek models are very simple, they're based on like 1980s Fortran programs. They're a little bit easier, and we can, you know, resubmit the LiDAR for the, for the Belle Fork area, which is very easy, you don't even have to rerun the Heqras model. But for the other models, we'd have to just, you know, check them, check their topography, and they just, and, and just any creeks that we see that just, the results don't look reasonable, we could, you know, go to, go that route. And, and that's, pretty much, that's my last slide, and then I guess Ryan and Glenn are going to talk a little bit more.
I've got a question.
Sure.
You said you were successful appealing the Wrightsville Beach?
Yes.
Define success, how about?
We remapped, we remapped about, I think it was almost about 600 acres that was supposed to be V-zone, and we remapped as A-zone, so, and that's kind of what they wanted to do. Actually, because along the beach, it was actually very favorable, as we said, the storm surge was going down. But then the waves, as soon as they got over, they got into Harbor Island, which is the estuarine area, again, the estuarine area, there was, there were some VE zones that just didn't make any sense. And so then we had to run that, the WAFIS wave model, and kind of prove, and work, we worked with FEMA, and they're usually pretty flexible on this, and, and we worked with them to, to remap the, those V-zones as A-zones.
So you get like half of it out, or?
We got most of it out.
Most of it?
And see, but that is a little simpler than the AdCirc modeling. The AdCirc modeling is the most complex component, modeling component of the, all that FEMA suite of models, and unfortunately, that is the model that is responsible for the BFEs in Jacksonville.
So you said earlier-
We didn't touch the AdCirc model for Wrightsville, we just-
Yeah, you said earlier that we're looking at a BFE increase of six to seven feet?
Yes.
So in our case, the success would be three or four feet?
Yeah, so it would still be an increase.
Right, right.
It's like currently, the downtown area, most of it is not in a flood zone, but we know that during certain storms, there may be a foot or two of water in the street. So should it be in a flood zone? It probably should be. I think the question is, should it be a BFE four or five, or should it be a BFE 10? I think that's really the question that it comes down to. I'll also let council know that what we're struggling with here is the same thing that Moorhead City and Carteret County and all the beach communities are facing right now. You know, there's multiple people that are looking into the same situation that we are, or whether to challenge or appeal the maps, hire consultants. I know that there's a couple of the small beach towns, Pine No. Shores, and those folks that they were kind of collectively trying to come up and looking at hiring somebody because they had the same concerns. I'm not sure how many people are actually going through it, but, you know, this is something that we're all struggling with.
If there's no more immediate questions, let us just go to the punchline so that you all can make a decision and give guidance to staff as it was. Clearly, he talked about some areas that you would not have expected these flood maps to have such significant impact on, and that downtown area, clearly, if there's people down there that are going to be significantly affected by this, that are already residents of this area and can have that impact. And as he indicated on the insurance, if you're in that area where you actually have a negative elevation perceived by the fact that it's going to be higher than, those potential of looking at a premium that's in the $10,000 range just means, as someone said, walk away, or whatever happens there, this is something that your citizens certainly, you know, are going to feel an effect from. And as we mentioned, here's that Belle Fork area, significant in there, and we noticed now that we have some improved data that is available in there. And so Richard is making the recommendation to you that you authorize the office to identify an additional scope of work, negotiate a fee, and then have you consider whether to go forward when you find the information and read that scope of work. And that's the recommendation that we put forth this year, management team to you.
I think emotional authorization?
Second.
Third.
Any other discussion about that motion? Any questions of Mr. Way or Ryan?
I'm assuming the additional scope of work would be the actual appeal, or just, we don't know yet?
Well, Richard will, will lead that process, and one of the concepts is, is to identify the work that he has indicated, those models and doing things such as that, and then perhaps have that be step one. And then, the step two would be then to file those appeals based upon what the data comes back in. Obviously, if the data comes back and we go, whoa, we're not telling this anybody, you know, then, then that, oh, we stop there. But, you know, that's the deal, you know, so we want to do what's best for the citizens of Jacksonville.
We have a motion in a second, I want to load it in favor. All opposed?
Thank you, Mayor Council.
And we just want to say, as the mayor pro tem mentioned, for people watching at home, if they'll go to this website, you can see what your home is. In the upper right-hand corner, there is a, it says, "Existing as the maps that are existing at this time," and then you just move it to Preliminary, which is, has nothing to do with like, "Promosed," I don't know why they use those words, but anyway, they do. And you can watch the blue overtake many properties in the city of Jacksonville and that are in areas that surprise you in a lot of ways there.
Right, that Effective and Preliminary, if you want to come down to City Hall, we can kind of demonstrate a little bit, I believe, clear, where you can see basically green and red. Red is bad because it's getting bigger, and green is good because it's going away, versus toggling back and forth while you're waiting for the map to change from Preliminary to, or from Effective to Preliminary. So for the citizens at home, we'd be happy to sit down and demonstrate that for you as well. So if you're anywhere close to the estuary riverine system and you're not sure, please feel free to come down and see us.
Well, I think it's incumbent on us to look out for the interest of our citizens, and I think y'all head in the right direction trying to get this appeal across and formulate an appeal.
Well, thank you, council, for your recommendation, and that's all that we have for you this evening.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Call in favor.